and plants it's like an almost 45 degree angle now it's about to fall over
where is that
right down there or by the drain
you're talking about the manner where the trees are
yes um do we need a permit for that
we do need a permit for that because you're now what you've done is you have you have closed in the wall or it's holding the porch and that's holding the water and that's a structural thing there so when you find that wall and you see the cracks in there that's holding too much water because it's going to be built right
so Joanne let me ask you I mean it's a micro project but now they're doing this boat thing they're going to be coming in and out handy that boat thing that I told you we did not need a permit it's turned into a nightmare
the dock even
the dock
it's architectural drawings now it's wind speed how much how much of it the dock is going to so now they're going to go in and out with this dock thing and by the time they get done it's going to be possible to try and take it out
so another
once they come in and they're doing something like this it doesn't have a permit they'll just be checking us off
can I just ask you one question here Joanne you could have more knowledge of this I think than anybody in this room but when we talk about the drainage project or any other drainage is it true that we really are doing something absolutely incorrect you know for what we're draining with that so we're already sending heart tubes in now is that
we are sending heart tubes right now it's sort of grandfathered in that once we change any change to our drainage system we'll have to put a filtration system if anything that comes off the porch or anything that comes off the bus into that now everything will have to have a filtration system that's how often we have to be really careful of what we do is right now we're letting it happen that we keep having problems it's going to cost us probably we're going to afford a million and have a hundred dollars to get all the filtration system and that's why we cannot make sure we I mean I mean as of never put in that who thought that little golden dock that Apey Dev built her it doesn't need a permit but then again someone called in on us
so are we going to pull it
probably I have a dock and we're going to pull it out because you know we're really trying all the time working lots everywhere so I went to this manager who he's only said there's something I can do but now with 40 but now he's building zoning and building um I talked to Ponchi Eric guy there he's going to come over and he's telling me the seven things we need today to bring it you know but I just don't believe we have I think I had to test that little dock with wind shear because if we had a hurricane you would lift it out and put it in the garage you know what I'm saying
and architectural drawings are right now
but architectural drawings are right now
but if anyone in this club now goes down to anyone in cities and we want a permit we put this drainage system in and now we didn't know we needed a permit and now we do now we're going to go to a whole thing and send a big filtration system
well I know they're going to do that or they're going to want our architectural drawings or they're going to want all this or they're going to want all that it's going to have to come out because it's definitely not so definitely not
what are you talking about the government
no the drainage is drained because we took the root drains and hooked in and they're I don't think it's legal to drain their root drains into the net yeah I don't know I I asked that by somebody and go this is you know just say by what I've seen about you know hooking my rain she says no I couldn't do that but now we've already done it and we have to be careful because we hook drainage from outer ridge into the one and that's when the road started rolling away because if it's not done right it doesn't get looted right so all that water is running out then it gets into the rock the rock goes into the drain and all that goes into the net so when you're putting anything like that it's very serious I mean I don't know how Henry drilled a hole into that into that concrete corn holes the base I mean we didn't do it just right and then traffic how we drill a hole into that big thing just right I don't think we had any bore hole that big so I'm not sure how he did that
so what is your advice on what we should do right now because I
think about it for a couple weeks hold your desk that you know nothing okay I don't know what to do because now we know it's illegally in and we're not saying anything we're on my own so I don't know what to do our best thing would be to call and say hey you know we got some of this little drainage thing you know but if you look at it you know I know number one if you do that that's like you have to compact the rock we took out and we didn't compact we didn't compact right now which and if you don't compact that and put the asphalt over it since trucks will be announced it's going to start all popping up anyway
you're right it's a pretty good idea any even minor projects here so talk with uh you know with Joanne here she she
um we have another project that we're going to do we're fixing the uh port two the net post is that either
the net post
yes
but like I called and just about putting the little screen on the back of the fence you know just to you know so they couldn't cut it and come through because it'll absolutely not permit even though it's just a taskable fence we already had a permit for it because we're putting wood nets and we're going to have to do that
so what do we get with that wall is it just going to fall over what do we do
well just take it out and you've set three pomegranate there we don't have the wall with palm trees and you just set three pomegranate you know pops of plants there
we're going to discuss them pipe though because that's where the the ice maker drains out the things so would we need a permit though if we were to just scrap the drainage and just put new asphalt down where the the water is clearly eroded away in the asphalt because that's what was a big issue would we need a permit for that too
do asphalt right there
yeah
but but what I'm saying is because the guy who just did the the whole wall right there he just fixed that up and sealed it and everything now it's up around so who knows the water could be now coming back into and just paid he just paid the guys for the downstops and that was like we were bringing about all the town we just we chopped those off they're gone so you know we really need to whenever we need a structural thing like that I mean there are people here helping we just have to ask I mean I and you I'm sorry we have a significant you know I mean now since we saw that building fall down you know how unfortunate does it struggle we need the things to go we need things right there all the time we hired someone who was so cheap and handy man and we're not you know things happen it's only been a few years old you know we got to make sure we're doing it right and we don't have to have some sort of calamity like you know is there a way that I think I just could look at the wall and see if there's a way to do a patch job on it somehow
pretty much the only way is to take it down and put new concrete rocks in because it's and you have to give me rebar because the rebar is the big issue
the thing is if you build that on top of the the concrete base it's holding the floor of the rebar front and all that water is being held on the water and the plants and it's draining you know rains into it all the same next to that concrete wall this whole thing of that whole patio and so that is starting to separate too need to not have dirt next to it you know what I'm saying so it doesn't start to so I'm just thinking I mean if if I mean maybe we just we should have made this the hole at a French drain for that you know just for the water from the because the passive water we have is an ice machine maybe we just throw a dip sort of a French drain you can do the hole of the concrete you put some rock in there so the water's running into the rock and seeping down into the ground it doesn't go anywhere but it has a rate over the sun and breaks towards training but it's a big problem we have a wall on our porch over there and so if you guys are dumping all the root water on that water it's why you use that one box which also having problem beating the water off the porch or you're setting the normal waters that will storm drain versus speaking sometimes the water from making up the porch over there you gotta get that water off and save the hardship and then that little good vessel will be out there
okay
so I don't know what's going to happen now because I mean two or three times we've voted on this to see what happens but I'm sure we're going to say
okay um alright is that everything for that
yes
hey um I have no idea what you want me to do here are we voting to maybe apologize
um I'm making a motion I want you to vote it doesn't have to be you but I had harassed playing a letter against me for no reason so I would like an apology for that and then on top of that nobody authorized you to send letters or use your brother the little guy who's over the Brooks building with the threatening notices my tenants so like an apology to the whole Brooks building like an apology for that so whether it comes from the board or you doesn't matter we still are apologizing nobody was being harassed and nobody authorized you to give those letters out can you make a motion
I I'd like to talk about this
okay can we repeat the motion
this can't be legal because you you literally you you're attacking me right now
I'm not attacking anyone it's the truth
can I can I talk
we're having a special motion there has to be standing on second
wait can we repeat the motion
the motion is to apologize to the president of Brooks and the Brooks building
for what
for what well for what for harassing we're all going to be right for asking one so I would like an apology for that because that was you know my goal for not it's really not not how any agenda is used to go after our board members and secondly nobody authorized you to send letters to the Brooks building if anybody here on the board authorized Ryan to give letters out to the Brooks building threatening us lean to possible shorty for that cut off of our services no it isn't
do you do you just say something about that communication should not be against board members is that something
no that's not what I said I said the agenda shouldn't be used to go after board members
should be allowed to go
shouldn't be allowed to go after board members great any members
okay so when a board member
it should have been in a closed door meeting if anything
okay so when a board member sends out a memo calling other board members a disgusting hypocrite a toxic person among other things that's
true hey we want to vote on that that's not harassment that's a private forty minutes if you want to vote on private forty minutes I can pull out your private forty minutes
we voted against Thatcher we didn't vote against harassment
okay either way no one was being harassed I'd like an apology if you're being harassed and also first of all Dean did you authorize Ryan to send letters over to the Brooks building
I don't have any issue with him doing it
but did you authorize it
I don't
did the board authorize it no it did not so if you so if you have no issue with it so next time I'm president or Joanne's president we can leave lean letters at your door you don't have a problem with that
I don't think that was a lean letter
if you got Stephanie just draw all the lean letters next time you'll pay your assessment
that wasn't a lean letter
and make sure you call me discussing Kurt again and that would just
well if you're forty years one day and then you're not the next I mean what do you want to say nobody was threatening you or TJ but now you want to lean the entire Brooks building
I didn't say I wanted to lean
you just said you had no problem with the letters
I said I have a problem
a letter's not
but so next time we can leave Joanne can send Stephanie over and leave lean letters at your door
because because this is about me can I respond to
I'm just wanting to do that
no what I'm saying is
she can't right
what I'm saying is
she cannot right
what I'm saying is I have no problem at all with what Ryan did none but I do have a problem with you saying that what yours what you call people is not harassing that is
it's not harassing it's not harassing the boards aren't saying it was harassment
it is
I have a legal duty to contact you it's not harassment if you don't like my word and my speech there's three three in speech there's an email monitor sorry you don't like my emails wait it's not harassing I didn't harass anyone Joanne's wrong for him to leave those letters at the Brooks noise shafts
I mean just say something I don't know when ever in history of Lauderdale tennis club that a board president sent a letter or put a letter in another building without a direction from this board
never
hello Jean you're ready you did it
it's never happened excuse us the board's talking
you did it to all of us
the board's talking and was sent by a lawyer after a vote
what would you like
I would like to say the bottom if any of us board presidents failed in our duties to pay our bills BMA or whatever we would be considered derelict in our duties as an official we would be committing without pieces miss pieces non pieces as an official never has this organization ever had some building fall this far behind in paying
where was this drawn just a couple months ago when we were going to put leans on Jean and TJ where were you then where were you then I can't tell now right
no I'm not for leans at all
so what are you talking about
I'm saying never has this ever been done
right right never has been done
committing crimes
oh I'm committing crimes now oh okay
alright
anyway what happened well I don't have to be concerned it's great it's all I'm not going to do it but Jean you know Joanne sent Stephanie to send you a little letter and at your door said you would have freaked out probably and Tom would have something who knows what say TJ probably would follow ten page notice of appeals okay anyway put a motion motion's there you vote to apologize you don't vote to apologize
can I explain why I did those actions
because that's going to be you it has to be the board you're not going to do it you were wrong
can I explain why I did that
leaving your brother to drop leaning letters off is wrong
can I explain why I did it
they're sure you can explain that's what you can explain what you did things whether they're right or wrong
after we sent in emails making fun of TJ for being gay I had three presidents
TJ that's false that's false
you you made fun of him for wearing a skirt yes
made fun of him for wearing a skirt he wore it on the tennis court okay so so what it was a picture out in public I posted on an email it was already out in public so what about him at the downstairs at the patio bar trying to tell my dad I'm gay and that my dad's a homophobe so like that's funny that's funny but that's serious when you're talking about TJ right you're a hypocrite
I have Ron
you can't believe it it's about ten people I came forward down there and said sorry you can't believe me Ron whatever case maybe there's a vote on the table apologize ever bothered
I was discussing I had Ron I had TJ and I had Robert or Rob Paperson all you call me up or email me and say something needs to be done and they suggested censure so I just like to do your job president
do your job you don't come to the board members you're just going to go ahead and slip in there and surprise everyone you can say you wouldn't tell anybody you told
you left the minutes are you able to shut up
are you able to shut up
I just like to do your job as the founder of this meeting to put that on the agenda because three presidents wanted to
and I actually want to comment things on the agenda you didn't
you're not three presidents and all the things
that would be three presidents it's not a rule it's eight presidents sorry you're wrong but it's five presidents has to take eight not three presidents to get something on the agenda
Ryan that's a
so I also back in May at the meeting we made a rule you remember um if we if you were sixty days behind in paying your membership dues we would suspend memberships so that after you were sixty days behind in membership dues um I sent a letter to everybody
you sent a letter had your brother drop it off
oh that's
that's okay though but no I just want to get out so next time you're behind in your assessment we're going to drop off leaning letters to your front
saying your membership is going to be suspended you are sixty days behind in membership dues also we might be looking to start cutting out the trash or your um
like this is all okay with everyone here on the board right
because you are six months behind in BMA payments which is totally over twenty-five thousand dollars
because that was all discussing board
how long did Jean and TJ take to pay their assessment like what because it's not twenty-five thousand who cares
yeah twenty-five thousand is a lot of money we have to hold back the money from our buildings you are holding back the money from
you held back your money
I held back my personal so you're trying to
and like somebody so if they would have dropped off the letter to your joy you would have been fired with that
we got a letter in the mail
you would have been fired with that but from Joanne or your daughter would have
I got a letter in the mail
oh geez break some just break some try to get the new rules out
Dennis please Ryan you should never send out communications when you do not personally send this board
okay does that involve email or
no you're going to send out a letter to someone stating certain policies that's going to be something you should not do
and also what makes you think that after so many chances we may achieve a TJ that you're just going to go ahead and drop a lean on a whole building so it gave them like a gear attack
so the rule for the
yeah
so the rule's not sixty days
there is no rule we can't get like a thirty day extension if the board approves it
so in May
no we said we're going to sell my ladies threatening letters though
and April meeting there was a unanimous vote that after sixty days that now paying a membership dues we would suspend memberships are you telling me that didn't happen
I'm telling you that the board could come about and revote on that if they wanted to give a thirty day extension you're not no one sent the seventeen letters out
ooh that's a very dangerous
massage it any way you like
you can just say dude you brought it out with the everything else so right
oh you're no I said the membership would be and I said you're also behind on this stuff
okay well send that once you mail it up certified would you have your brother drop it off
why would I mail it up certified
why
why would you mail it up certified you're okay with that Jean why would you mail it up certified
why would you that's one of them
oh okay take notice let's get exciting newsletters go out
fifteen minutes to get the payment
we'll just maybe we'll just drop it off and maybe one
where is the money
you're right Dennis maybe I should just suspend memberships
yeah suspend them I mean it would be a suspend on your own or you need a board group for it you just start suspending memberships
after sixty days yeah
you guys should go to the board
we already voted
we voted sixty days
okay I think you're for a reboot for thirty day extension
wait a minute
for what
when we get there we're still on this vote apologizing
okay so one second then last month at the meeting you said in front of everybody that your back payments would be made June first because of the assessment money
was coming out
so now you're asking for thirty days
I'm going to ask a break and we're not there we're still apologizing
but now you're saying we want apology you said I'm not doing anything until I get an apology and you have said when I get an apology I'll write out the check now you're saying I want an apology and another thirty days
no 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 that's not what I'm saying if we would vote and we get there I have a check here for fifteen thousand dollars if we get to the vote would you say I don't believe you you don't believe me no
isn't it built for twenty-five
you're disgusting I heard that email and that's all you see nothing around here I've heard it all
so are you giving that to the uh
I don't know
disgusting
you know this is the going on now it's it's become a personal thing between the two of you
it's not personal
I read the letter it wasn't that over the top I can see Dennis's point I can see your point but this affects all of us if you keep withholding and they can't make their scheme
okay so here's here's why all the disgusting characters okay doesn't explain I will I'll tell you something this is funny because we'll wear a hat and we'll wear a hat the Brooks building that was going to do this a year ago but COVID hit okay and I what
my Jeff Morris that here in meetings said we have a problem with COVID you make so much
this was early on Jean this was early on Jean are you going to talk or are you just going to call me a liar you just going to call me a liar or you're going to let me talk there's a board member
you're asking a question you're asking a question and when Jeff Morris said something about COVID you jumped right down his throat and then you can send an email just exhorting Jeff about COVID and then next meeting you said oh
because he didn't care that the Brooks building had a COVID issue
well you didn't then
we did that's why I sent out an email because he didn't care about the Brooks building COVID issue so anyway to the
so we're going to do a vote to
can I repeat the motion so I make sure I have it right to apologize to the president of Brooks for one sending out the agenda with the intention of harassing the Brooks building and president two lack of authorization to give out letters to Brooks building enjoy the second is that accurate
so
and when you get apology you'll get a check of all your letters
why did we hold the check already due
so what are the things are we not allowed
why did we hold the check that's already due
keep going let's keep going but you want to get it all out kind of get it all out I don't know who the hell you are even living in Brooks
you're a child
you're a child listen to you if you want a seat over there
you're the legal stuff
I'm going to leave this out
what we got first is your draft okay
you're legal stuff and I'm a liar
we have two motions on the floor so we're going to do a vote all in favor of
apologizing what's that
so you have a sample motion I think we'll apologize and just to get me some checks
it has to be a check we're going to do that thirty days later
you he already did I checked it in
alright all in favor Tilden Johnson and Brooks are in favor all against um let's see sorry McLaughlin Adderidge and Langland all staying are you against or staying you kind of like do you say against and we feel this is staying
uh Davis
Davis is against
against yeah
so it fails three to four okay moving on Brooks payment and vote to extend thirty day I don't know about the thirty day payment because then you want thirty
it doesn't matter because we're going to have a closed door meeting
well we still haven't a Jedi
well we don't put it into the election
okay
wait a minute why is the person who has the Brooks payment and votes to extend thirty day payment
alright
moving on
can you explain what it is
vote to table it
you want a table now
yeah we're table it
and you have the check for part of that run yeah that's right but you're not probably handling the check
I'll discuss this in a board with the board if they're going to discuss Brooks
this cannot be discussed
it can be discussed it will
no it's not
it's against board a lot
it's not
okay I'll just start getting
what what's the climate for closed meeting it's personnel have to wire and is that it
okay personnel and something with your wire governor if any litigation with the wire governor that's it
that doesn't need qualifications that's not
okie dokie
so what are you so what are you going to do
what am I going to do
yes please
right I just said we're table it I'd like the motion to table it
well I don't even know what this means what is this instead of thirty day payment what does that mean
right what do you want
I don't want anything now
are you going to pay
Joanne
I do should have paid
you're saying you can pay with a bottom line payment if you'll call it right and then during the thirty day payment till the last final payment of the
of the ten thousand worth
yeah well
Don't predict what's going to happen don't predict this
guys I just I want to point something out to you real quick I've got one of the biggest tournaments coming here next week that I need things I need water fountains I need things and you all are hurting this club like I don't care who's wrong who's right who's wrong you guys are killing this club and if I have to throw a tournament with fright that looks like I'm from a third world country I'm literally I don't even know what I'm going to do I'm so embarrassed the whole USKA everybody is coming here like what are we doing we're fighting over emails and letters like
I know a simple apology would have done
Dennis I understand you're upset but again this is affecting the business
and they have time to put harassment junk on the agenda but you're worried about water fountains they should not be worried about they should be worried about other things they're harassing emails
there's a lot of things that have to work
good and like you said tell me so I'm worried about just getting emails
can can we just act like adults and just acknowledge one another and everyone's apologized and we move on please
Dennis I'm I'm sorry but I have three people that put it I do sure you need to put that on the agenda
it doesn't again it's not the amount of presidents that get on the agenda you're not realizing that it's not it's not
to follow the rules
the amount of presidents second agenda
Ryan were you in any means trying to hurt Dennis personally
no of course he was
you were were you trying to personally hurt him
no
I don't care about him
okay and Dennis it happened that we need the money and we're not going to and the club's going
so apologize this is one other person that's taking it whatever sorry he said Jean we wouldn't have done it to you
Dennis Dennis I'm sorry
thank you thank you
I would do it too
Dennis that's the TJ you have
I can move on I think this is personal to me you take it personal this is business this is LTC business I actually like you have this atmosphere
you have a different excuse every now
oh okay I get in the same excuse every time
no you had you had the TJ now you have
what TJ
is there a motion to adjourn
Dennis's motion is
he has a petition uh motion table
so to apologize Jean you are not for censoring but now you don't want to issue this a simple apology because we would have come and said get your face
is there a second no enough guys enough is there a motion to second the uh the table
Dennis's motion to vote to table to extend the thirty day payment
I second
okay
okay um alright any more discussion on it
what's the motion
that's what I'm
table then table
I have a motion that's Dennis's motion to table to vote to extend thirty days
okay all in favor okay uh Brooks Johnston and Tilden favor all against Davis and Winkfield and Langland against all staying
oh against yeah
okay but uh everybody else is against okay alright uh motion to adjourn anybody
yeah
motion by Brooks seconded by Johnston okay
we need this money how can we adjourn there there's six months how can we adjourn without getting this money this is insane there's six months due
well I apologize she apologized and we're all apologizing so that's like expulsion
that's exactly what it is
he said he only needed one apology for one workout
we need it
and we did